Good evening ladies and gentlemen. At this time I'll call into order the open session of the Arlington Independent School District on September 5th beginning at 7:16 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Kavasos and Lina's in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, please be seated. At this time would you please silence all cell phones, electronic devices, avoid disruptions to those around you. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a performance by these lovely young men and women sitting in front of us today is a performance by the Martin High School String Quartet, Michael Stringer, Jennifer Lemon, and Jamie O'Vall, and I'm missing one. Who did I miss? Oh, we got him, okay. And they are playing, now this is where I'm really gonna butcher it, so just bear with me. It's more fun Ms. Solins if I tell it, because they'll laugh at me for saying how I say it. They're playing "The Tango por una cabeza" by Gardell and Notton. Pretty close? Sure, close enough. At this, at this time, let's, let's hear from the Martin High School String Quartet. And before the students run off, we know musicians like to talk with your instrument, but I also want you to each introduce yourself and say what year you are and how long you've been playing your instrument. You can't play this, you gotta talk.
I, I can't play this? Well, I'm, I'm Austin Simmons, and I play viola, and I, I'm year of 2014, so I'm a senior. Hello.
How long have you been playing the viola?
Um, I, I started in fifth grade, um, so, quick math.
That's good enough, we get it, we get it, we get it.
I'm Marjorie Dineger, I'm also a senior, and I also started in fifth grade, which is eight years.
Always relying on the women to answer the question, it's a good thing.
I'm John Wilkie, I'm a sophomore, so 2016, whoop! Um, yeah, six years, let's go.
Hello, uh, my name is John O., and I've been playing violin since the second grade, and so that's a long time. I'm a senior this year, so enjoying my year. Thanks for having us.
Congratulations to you four. And then this is, this is just a small portion of the Martin High School Orchestra. The 2012 Martin Orchestra placed second in the State of Texas Music Educators Association Honor Orchestra attack, Honor Orchestra Contest, and then actually, they, Martin has been in the finals of the state orchestra eight of the past nine years. So, it's a continual tradition of a great orchestra at Martin. And that song is amazing, and even better in person. I know we've all heard it, and it is amazing to hear, so congratulations. The next part of our program is something new we want to do, so you're the very first one, which is a distinct honor, and you should be very proud. We have a ton of amazing students here in the AISD, and we as a board looked up, and one of the things we've really started really doing a whole lot more in the last year and a half with the strategic plan is how do we get the student interaction? And how do we see what our great students are doing? And don't forget why we're all here. Why are y'all sitting in these meetings, and why we focus on this? And it is about the students. And that's what we're here for. And so, we have started, at each month, we will honor one student in the AISD. There's not that many months, and there's a lot of students. So this is a very distinct honor. And so our very first student, our high school student of the month for the AISD, not just for your high school, this is for the whole district for the month of September, we'd like to honor from Arlington High School, a senior year, Ms. Georgia Beatty. All right, Georgia, come up. Stand up there, because we're gonna brag on ya for a minute, Georgia, and then you'll get to say a few words, and then Ms. Young, we'll have you come up and say a few words also. But let me read it first, if, on the, on the, what Ms. Young said about Georgia. "Georgia's an incredible young lady. She's an IB student, is very involved in extracurricular activities, makes excellent grades, and is a leader on our basketball team, track team, and our school. Georgia's a role model for student body, exemplifies the spirit, pride, and tradition of our great school. She has an infectious smile, a contagious attitude, and incredible work ethic. I'm extremely proud of this extreme, outstanding young lady. Georgia's a senior student, she's an IB student, which if you all know, and you haven't interacted with IB students, she's a lot smarter than the rest of us. And she works a lot harder, because it's a lot of work in IB. You've done a great job. She's in the National Honor Society, but then she also finds time, she's a sword mentor, she's on the basketball team, she's on the track team doing relays and long jumps. And what do you do with all your free time?"
Work.
Work. You work also, where do you work?
Jimmy John's.
Awesome. We love Jimmy John's. I like, I like some Jimmy John's. I've had a Jimmy John's or two in my day, Georgia. So, uh, with that, Georgia, we just wanted to say congratulations, um, thank you for all your hard work in being one of the exemplary students. We've got a couple of things, which we've got, we've got even outside, we would come down, but before we come down, I'd ask, Georgia, would you tell us what you think makes you such an exceptional student?
Hard to explain. Um, basically just put in the work. My dad always said, if you're gonna give, don't give a little bit, if you're gonna give anything, give everything, 110%. So basically just giving, you know, the effort that God has given me and the strength, and basically just giving him the praise and doing what I have to do, and the potential that I know that I have to make it.
Perfect. Thank you. Georgia, is there anyone you'd like to introduce that's in the audience?
My mom, Felicia Beatty, my dad, Glenn Beatty, and Ms. Young.
Perfect. And Ms. Young, would you please come up and give us a few words about Georgia as a student?
Okay, President Hogg, you're gonna get me in trouble, because I told her she wouldn't have to speak.
Well...
And so, um... She's the outstanding student, we've got her. She is, and whenever I had the opportunity to nominate a student, Georgia was the first one that came to my mind. And you read all the different things she's involved in, and one thing that I didn't mention is probably the main reason I picked her is because of her character. And she's an outstanding role model, and does everything the right way. And without being told, she just does what she needs to do, and she's just one reason why we have an incredible student body, because they look up to people like her and follow her lead. And so I'm very, very proud of Georgia.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Young. And Georgia, please stay down there, and Ms. Young also, and Dr. Kavasos, if you would, joins me down there so we can present Georgia with a token of our appreciation.
Keep on working and either try and get a basketball scholarship to SMU.
So, yes. Thank you.
Georgia, I'd also like to present you with the board, and the superintendent, only the board superintendent can give these away, they're official AISD pins. Please put this on your ID badge, wherever you like. Take it, it's a big appreciation, it is. I don't know if Jimmy John's will allow that, but I have a feeling Ms. Young will allow that on her, so, congratulations, Georgia. Congratulations on this, Beatty, that's a distinct honor, and we will be honoring one student from each high school, and we will be rotating high schools each month. So, next month, we're going in alphabetical order, correct? So it's an outstanding way to honor some of our outstanding students here in the AISD. Next up, we have administrative appointments, Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like to recommend the board ratify the individuals discussed in closed session for principal for Crouch Elementary, principal for Morton Elementary, and assistant principal for Sam Houston High School.
Go ahead, your motion.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Solins, and a second by Dr. Rice. Any discussion? Sitting down, please vote. Six trustees present, Ms. Payna is home taking care of a daughter who just had surgery. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in affirmative. Dr. Kavasos, please introduce the candidates.
Thank you, President Hogg. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the principal from Crouch Elementary, Jaclyn Orsini. Jaclyn. Jaclyn attended the University of Puerto Rico and obtained her Bachelor of Business Administration in Marketing, and her Master of Business Administration in Human Resources. She's most recently an assistant principal, or was an assistant principal, in Grand Prairie ISD in Seguin Elementary, has taught first, third, and fourth grade bilingual, and has been a national sales manager in Puerto Rico, and has been a training and quality supervisor for the Ford Motor Credit Company in Puerto Rico. So Jaclyn, Jackie. Congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Of course. Thank you very much, President Hogg, um, board members, and of course, Dr. Kavasos. I am honored to be part of Arlington Independent School District, and, and I'm looking forward to be an agent of positive changes in the education field. Thanks for your vote of confidence and the opportunity to lead Crouch Elementary School. As the instructional leader to this campus, I'm committed to develop a strong school culture with outstanding servant leadership at all levels. A campus where I believe that students will be motivated to innovate, to transform, to create, and to revolutionize. As one of your elementary principals, I feel responsible and determined to exceed the minimum standards through a professional team that I'm sure that they will be motivated to excel. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to foster a collaborative environment, a school with students that will be exposed to be, to a challenging, explorative, and interactive curriculum that will allow them to strengthen their talents, their skills. And I really appreciate the opportunity that you're providing me today to be a precursor of the education field, because I strongly believe that today you are not just only me giving the opportunity to become a school administrator, you're just also giving me the opportunity to become a role model, to become a coach, to become a facilitator, to become an architect, to become a steward, and to become an inspiration for many of our kids. I am determined to foster a school where my teachers will feel empowered, they will be motivated, and where parents, teachers, and kids will have a voice that is gonna be listened, motivated to, to be the precursor of a school where kids are gonna be encouraged to become successful adults in the future. I want to take the opportunity to say thanks to my husband, Samuel, right here. Sorry, baby, for not being cooking you for the last two weeks. You see, I have to keep my sketch, because I get easily out of track of my script. I really want to thank also my friend Glory, who opened the doors of her home six years ago when I came here to Texas, and I lived at her home while I was looking for a job, and she was actually the one who told me, you should go and become a teacher, you love kids, and you can make a difference. So thank you very much for that. To my team, right there. Oh my gosh, I'm very blessed. It has been just one week, one week and a half, I started the first day of school, and they have been very, very supportive with me. I'm very blessed, and I anticipate that this is gonna be a very successful school year. Okay. I was going to say hi to my parents, but they gave me the surprise today, they came from Puerto Rico to be here with me. So, thank you very much. I'm not gonna cry, for being very supportive. I'm here because they, they were my, they always inspired me since I was a very young girl to, to do, to do the max. And finally, if you can please excuse me, my family in Puerto Rico, los amo, los quiero, y añoro verlos pronto. I'm telling them that I love them, and I, and I'm willing to, to see them very soon in Puerto Rico. So, thank you very much for, for this opportunity.
President Hogg, before I introduce the new principal at Morton, I'd like to take just a brief opportunity to thank Waleen George, who served as interim and continues to help us in our district. So thank you, Waleen, for your service and your continued dedication to our students. And also I'd like to thank Aaron Perades for his service at Crouch Elementary, and he happens to be here in the back, so thank you, Aaron, for your years of service. All right, now the new principal at Morton Elementary School, Ms. Tashalan McDonald. Tashalan attended Xavier University in Louisiana, and obtained her Bachelor of Arts in Journalism, and the University of Southern Mississippi, and obtained her Master of Science in Public Relations. Most recently, assistant principal at Crowley ISD, has taught fourth grade language arts, and has taught fourth and fifth grade ESL in the past, has been a marketing coordinator, has been a public relations representative, and a market, marketing analyst. Tashalan, welcome, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Of course, yes. Good evening to everyone. First, I would definitely like to extend my sincerest gratitude to President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos, and the interview team for granting me the opportunity to be a part of the Arlington ISD family. It is a huge honor to be here before you today. As the president of Morton Elementary, I have the honor and privilege of serving with and working with some of the most dedicated, strongest people I have ever met in my life. This is my staff, they are a wonderful group of people, give yourselves a round of applause. They just don't know that they're stuck with me. So thank you so very much. I would like to recognize my family that I have here with me tonight, my husband Rodney McDonald, who has been a huge support and a huge motivator, and my cousin Davida, who is also an educator in Irving ISD, we're gonna try to move her on over just here soon. She doesn't know that just yet. And definitely I have to give thanks to God, because he orders my steps, and he's allowed me to be where I'm standing right here today. I do have family members that are watching, my children who are not able to be here with me physically, but they are here with me in spirit, Benjamin and Tiara, I do appreciate them for helping me to be a great mother, a great parent, and taking me through some challenges and struggles that helped me on my job day to day. So definitely a thanks to them. Also, I have family watching from Jackson, Mississippi, my two largest and biggest supporters since day one, my parents Barbara and Arthur Dixon, hi mom, hi dad. Then also my friends and family who are watching from all over the United States, I know that they're all tuning in now, they were very excited, and I wanted to be a part of tonight, so I thank them for always making sure that I'm grounded and that I'm humble. Definitely I would like to give a thanks to some of my previous mentors in Crowley ISD, the deputy superintendent Bill Johnson, as well as principal Vivian Lincoln, they have helped me to grow professionally. And of course I have a wonderful supervisor now, Dr. Stephen Works, who has been working with me tirelessly. We text back and forth, so I thank him, he's not here today, but hopefully he'll watch this broadcast and see the recording to let, let him know that I'm very thankful. And also I'd like to thank Waleen George as well, because she helped me to transition. She was an awesome supporter, and she continues to assist me daily. And then I cannot at all forget all of you for helping me to be a huge part of something so great, all of the positive things that are happening here in Arlington ISD. So I thank you so very much for the opportunity. Go, my friend!
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce the assistant principal for Sam Houston High School, Mr. Pedro Pete Kavasos. Welcome.
No relation.
The University of Texas, almost, no relation, no relation. Pete attended the University of Texas at Arlington, obtained his Bachelor of Arts in Interdisciplinary Studies, attended UT Arlington, and obtained his Master of Education in Leadership. Most recently, fourth and third grade reading/writing dual-language teacher, and has also taught pre-kindergarten and dual-language program in the past. Pete, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
I would. President of the school board, Mr. Hogg, board of trustees, and Dr. Kavasos, thank you for the appointment of assistant principal at Sam Houston High. I'd like to take this time to introduce my beautiful wife, Stephanie, my son Chase, who's rock and roll 24/7, and my, there he is, and my brainiac of a daughter, Kennedy Hilton. The three of them make me better every day. I would also like to thank Mr. Benavides and the Sam Houston Interview Committee for seeing something in me that they felt could help. I'm honored to get to be a part of the Sam Houston family. I would also like to thank a very important woman in my life, which is my mother, she's watching. She raised five kids, five kids. All of us got an education. I'm a little bit emotional here, because she did it without a lot of help. Four educators and one that loves to drive trucks. So, she's done a great job, I love you, mom. Last but not least, my mentors at Grand Prairie. There was a woman named Angela Leslie who took the time to say, you know what, I see something in you. You're good with kids. I can't believe my dream's coming true. Whitney Carlisle, who's my boss right now, but not for long. Thank you very much, I've learned a lot from her, reading data, taking care of people, because the ultimate goal is making sure that our kids have the best. As I've seen here in Arlington, we've got great musicians, great character in our high schools, and I hope to continue that with them and mentor them. Thank you very much.
Dr. Kavasos, I don't know how you do it, I'm more impressed every single time you do these pointies. And once again, another three wonderful, and welcome to the AISD family, we're glad y'all are here. So as is our custom, would y'all please follow Mr. Hill, it's not hazing, we're just taking you out. Follow Mr. Hill to the lobby for a receiving line, so he shows to meet you and welcome you. If you would, please let the board go first, so we can appreciate, we can take a brief break. We will be back at seven, no later than 7:55. I'll now call this meeting back to order. Now we come to open forum for agenda items, I don't have any cards, so we'll move on to the next section. Next on our agenda is action items. First action item is action item A, Consider Charge to Capital Needs Steering Committee. Dr. Rice.
Okay, thank you, President Hogg. The Community Engagement Committee of the Board, which is myself as chair, Mr. Hibbs and Mr. Pompa as members, we have put together with the, the great assistance of Ms. Powell and Dr. Kavasos and others, a, a draft charge that's before you tonight for the Capital Needs Steering Committee. And the, the intent of this charge is to guide our steering committee that will be meeting over the next several months in reviewing our facilities, facilities assessments, capital needs, to guide them in the workings of their committee, the operations of their committee. They will be going through and facilitated by our facility assessment consultants. This committee will name their own chair, elect their own chair, and they will have a number of capital needs overall committee meetings, probably six is what we're projecting right now, with them also to identify whatever subcommittees they need to form on specific capital needs, whether that's in transportation, fine arts, athletics, et cetera, et cetera, whatever they, they define. And they will come back to us with periodic reports and final, final votes on what they've decided as priorities for our facilities vision in the district, just to provide us as a board of trustees, extra information that, that we can use moving forward to execute our strategic plan. So, the, without taking the time to read the entire charge, it is before you, it's up on the, the wall on the monitors, I'd be happy to entertain any, any questions or any concerns at this point, otherwise as a committee coming forward, that would be our motion to approve this charge. charge.
Does it form a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the charge. Seeing no second because it's coming out of committee at this time, we'll have any discussion. Any discussion on the charge? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voted in the affirmative. We have a charge for a committee. Action Item B, Dr. Reich, consider appointment of Capital Needs Steering Committee. Dr. Reich.
All right. With that charge, we have a slate of Capital Needs Steering Committee members that we have before you. The charge indicates that there'll be three School Board members, ex officio, which is us as a Community Engagement Committee, myself, Mr. Hibbs and Mr. Pampa. We have 12 parents, two per network. The Sam Houston Network, we have Maria Robles and Raymond Ruiz. Lamar High School Network, David Willbanks, Becky Berry. Martin High School Network, Andrew Peel, Stephanie Roper. Segin High School, Veronica Carter, Alicia Carberry. Bowie High School, Keisha Mays, Jennifer Boyle. Arlington High, Justin Chappa and Tara Gray. We have principals, one per grade span. The elementary representative is Tammy Rogers. Andy Hagman is Junior High, and Fernando Benavides is our high school principal representative. Teacher Association representatives from the ATPE, we have Shannon Hanrahan, if I said that right. TSTA, Sarah Spurrier. UEA, Jessica Levy. AISD non-administrator employees, we have Nick Tadonneo, James Micah Green and Suzanne Danglemeier. And the business community, this came on recommendation from our Chamber of Commerce, we have Pam Dawson, Steve McCollum and Jeff Williams. Our City of Arlington representative, our City Manager, Trey Elverton. Our two student slab members, Delrena Nguyen and Kayla Wery. Our community representatives at large, we have Chad Bates, Jeannie DeKine, Randy Hendricks, Suzanne Hudson, John Nolan and Steve Plamidon. And our university college representatives, we have John Hall, who's a Senior VP at UTA over Finance and Operations, and Mike Senatell, who's over, I think, all programming at TCC. We do have six alternates listed, Russell Green, Janice Stutler, Ross Martinez Jr., Paula Womack, Ismail Taher and Jackie Johnson, in case any of these other people are not able to serve or have to leave the committee for any unforeseen circumstance. So, with those names read into the record, again, coming out of the committee, that's in the form of a motion. I do want to say a note to the public, thank you so much. We had nearly 80 applicants for this committee, which is something more than we've ever had to deal with before. It was a wonderful problem to have, put a great amount of time and work effort for us as a committee to go through these applicants and come up with this extraordinary list of committee members that we have. So, thank you, community, for being so interested and wanting to be involved. I think that sends a great message to us as a testament, what we're trying to do as a Board, as a district. And so, that's all I have unless my two committee members have anything to add.
Thank you, Dr. Reich, for that, and it's pretty nice to be able to see when you have alternatives that are so strong as to who they are. So, great committee, wonderful choice. At this time, we have a motion from the committee to accept the Capital Needs Steering Committee. Seeing it's from committee, we need no second. At this time, any discussion? There was... Yeah, I said motion. No discussion, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in the affirmative. We have a committee, and to the rest of the community out there, this committee will be holding many multiple community engagement events to solicit more community feedback. So, it's not just this committee, they're representing the entire rest of the community. So, thank you to the committee for all your hard work, and we know the hard work that's about to come from this committee. You're going to be tired of each other before the end of that. Next, we'll move on to discussion action item. Consider Tasby Policy Review Recommendations from Board Subcommittee. Mr. Barron.
I'd like to call on Mr. Hill to do the short presentation, and I'll have a few words. Thank you.
Hey, President Hogg, Board members, Dr. Cavazos. Over this past July, the administration met with Tasby to do a comprehensive review, if you will, of our board policy. And so, I just want to give you a short timeline and then the processes, and then I'll turn it back over to you all. The timeline, again, in July, we did the comprehensive review. August 15th, Tasby made a presentation to the Board about the policy recommendations along with, they submitted a summary of what those recommendations were. The Board, as you just mentioned, assigned the review of the policy and the revisions to a Board Subcommittee. Prior to today, that Board Subcommittee has met, they vetted out, they reviewed, they've made some recommendations, and updates were made by Tasby in a draft form. On today, the Subcommittee will recommend to the full Board that the changes should be authorized as they are presented. The week of the 10th, the consultant processes all of these revisions and sends a copy of the entire local policy packet back, including unchanging policies for the committee to review. On October 3rd, we'll come back with another... Or the Board will come back, it's a timeline here, to rescind the policy manual and then, in its entirety, and then adopt a new manual formally. Late October, review of Update 98 when it arrives as it came out of the latest legislative session. There will be some regulations that are removed from board policy that are recommended by Tasby, and so those regulations will be categorized and placed in our online Intranet for internal use, and this is a place that houses documents that we use internally already. So, it's just adding another layer to that for the internal use. As the administration, we're going to continue to work with our staff on reviewing policy bi-monthly in our leadership meetings, as well as reviewing the layout of the policy and any policy updates, legal updates that come from the state and/or local updates that come from board adoption. And that's kind of a short, brief timeline of where we've been and where we plan to go with the policy review. Any questions for me or, more importantly, for the Board Subcommittee?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I want to thank Michael Hill, Cindy Powell, the whole staff, Dr. Cavazos, and the people on the Subcommittee, which is Mrs. Sullins and Mrs. Peña, for helping out on this. And I especially want to thank Jennifer... Jen Cooper from Tasby, who knows more about policy than you could imagine. She came up, worked with us on all these policies. The rewrite brings us up to date with what is current as far as the legal policies coming out of Tasby. And like Mr. Hill said, in October, we will vote to formally rescind our old policies, adopt the new ones, which is here, and at the end of October, it'll start all over again because we will get from Tasby their update from the current, previously ended legislative session and all the legal changes that will come out of that. But at that time, we will be in much better shape to make the changes faster. All of our policies will be online through the aisd.net, so anybody that wants to read them can read them. And with that said, I'm going to make a motion.
We'd love to hear a motion, Mr. Barron.
I knew you would. I move that the Board authorize Tasby Policy Service to add, revise or delete local policies according to the summary document as presented by the Board Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Seeing as that's coming out of committee, we don't need a second, so we have a motion from committee to accept the board policy review. Any further discussion? Yeah, please. Go ahead, Dr. Reich.
As one trustee that is a policy geek and has been wanting to have a comprehensive policy analysis since day one, this is your... What is this, four or five, I guess, for me? I thank you, committee, for doing this. I thank you, Dr. Cavazos, for being part of this team and making this happen. And to be able to have a day where we will have a continual quality check on our policies as well as having an online link to the procedures and regulations that are tied to those policies is absolutely wonderful. And I... In healthcare, that's how we do it. That's how we get accredited in hospitals and health systems and other organizations in healthcare. And I don't know that it's really done that way in public education to the extent that we're now going to engage. And so, I want to say thank you and that this is something, I think, that is possibly a benchmark to present at future Tasby meetings and everything else, to show what can be done for an organization for efficiency and effectiveness. So, thank you, committee. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. You can call yourself a policy geek, but we've met the true policy person in Jen, so no one... Talk about a woman who knows policy, which... Real fun. Policy ninja. Very well, very well said, Ms. Sullins. Very well said. At this time, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in the affirmative. We have updated policies, which is always a great thing. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next on the item is Item B, Consider RFQ for Comprehensive Salary Market Study. Ms. Powell.
Good evening, President Hogg, Board members, Dr. Cavazos. One of the goals in our strategic plan is that the district will recruit and retain the most effective people by rewarding excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth. We have several activities to help us achieve that goal, and one of those was to conduct a salary market study. So, we have issued an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications, this summer to do that, and we had five respondents. We selected three of those very high-quality respondents and interviewed those firms, and there was a committee of several individuals, myself, the Assistant Superintendent of Administration, the Executive Director of Finance, the Director of Personnel Services and our Payroll Coordinator that interviewed these three firms and evaluated their submissions. And based on their submissions, their interviews and references, we are recommending that Tasby conduct a comprehensive salary market study for the district. So, this evening, we have with us from Tasby, Ann Patton, who is a Senior Compensation Consultant, and she has a brief presentation to make to the Board about Tasby's qualifications and their methodology for conducting this study.
Good evening. Thank you for asking me here this evening. I'm delighted to be here. I won't go through a lot of explanation about who Tasby is because I know you're well aware of Tasby, but within Tasby is our little division of HR Services, and we have been conducting compensation studies and providing services to Texas public schools and their staff and administrators since 1984. We have been conducting an annual salary survey, and we do compensation plan designs and compensation updates. Texas schools are our only customer. That is our mission. We have completed 1,500 compensation consulting services to over 500 school districts throughout the state. I listed about six of them. I personally am actually from the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and I spend a lot of time helping and working with your nearest and dearest school districts. Lewisville-Frisco of Plano, of course, here in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, but other large school districts throughout the state include Fort Bend, Northeast and Conroe, and so we are very experienced with both large and small Texas public schools. The process that we're going to be using is, I will just kind of walk through these steps. I promise not to take too much of your time. The first will be collecting data from the school district and conducting a planning meeting. The district will provide us with a big download of information out of your payroll system about your employees, their names, their salaries, basic demographic information. We will be interviewing district department heads to find out all about you, all about the jobs here, and find out concerns that your staff and your department heads may have about the compensation plan, kind of what do we need to fix. We will be conducting job analysis and a classification review, primarily using your job descriptions. We may be using some job analysis questionnaires for certain positions if we just need more clarification. Try to keep those to a minimum. They're very time-consuming to fill out, so we want to be as least disruptive to your staff as possible. We will be conducting this job market analysis, and we will be looking at Texas public schools as well as using third-party salary surveys. The Tasby Salary Survey, we have been conducting for 25 years. We survey 120 different benchmark jobs, both academic jobs and non-academic jobs, teachers, professionals, administrators, clerical, paraprofessionals, auxiliary, technology jobs. We will be looking at comparable districts within the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and we can look at comparable districts throughout the state. We act... Once we collect this data, we can slice and dice this data any way we need to look at it. We will be using other salary surveys, and the primary reason is because there are a lot of jobs in school districts whose skills easily transfer in and out of school districts. So, we'll be using third-party salary surveys to capture job information or job market information on jobs in the private and other private and public sector entities. This includes the Economic Research Institute, Connectsa, which is comp analyst, which is the online that we purchase a service to, Mercer US Metropolitan South Central Region, and the Texas Workforce Commission. These salary surveys allow... We are allowed and can get down to the Dallas-Fort Worth area, so it's not like we're looking at the whole state or we're looking at the whole southeast United States. We can actually home down and get to Dallas-Fort Worth. Or if we need to look statewide for certain jobs that you might recruit statewide for, we can do it that way as well. The process includes creating a market... Creating market-competitive pay structures because we will have looked at the hierarchy, the looking at your jobs. We will also have looked at your market, and we will create new pay structures for you. We will provide you findings and recommendations, and we will have cost models for you, and we can run a variety of different cost models. We will present the plan and the cost estimates to the senior administrative team, and at the end of the presentation, I'll show you the timeline on that. That will be a time for your administration to look at it, make sure they're comfortable with it, make sure that if we need to change some things or we have captured everything and fixed everything that needs to be fixed, we want to make sure it's all addressed. We will be developing pay procedures and reviewing your pay policies as well. So, this sounds like policy night here in Arlington, but we will be looking specifically at the pay policies and developing pay procedures that will address just day-to-day administration of how you manage the compensation plan, and we will be back. We will present the findings and recommendations to the Board at the end of the project. Deliverables to AISD, we will be providing you with a written final report. I believe you got a sample of this. It's going to include methodology, the summary of findings and recommendations, information on pay system management. We will include the proposed pay structures and the estimated costs, and you will also in the appendix have detailed market information of different jobs and how they compare. We will also... The administrative pay procedures that we will be providing include pay rate... How pay rates for new employees should be determined, how to deal with upgrades, how to reclassify jobs, what kind of processes are involved in that, how salary adjustments are calculated and how general pay increases are calculated. This is intended to be a procedure guide for your HR staff as well as, you know, it is, of course, an open record. There's no smoke, no mirrors, there's no mystery about this, that there's a process involved and procedures in place. And then, of course, we will look at your pay policies as well. We will provide follow-up support. This includes returning those data files back to you, every individual employee that you have on staff, when that snapshot in time is taken, we will calculate a general pay increase for them based on information that the district provides us, and we will also make recommendations if there's individual pay adjustments that need to be made. So, you'll get that back on every employee here within the district. And then, we can provide ongoing maintenance support. This would be for future years. There are several districts that I work with and that we... That other Tasby consultants work with, and we work with them every year. We come in once a year, take a market snapshot of the market, make sure your pay structures are managed and maintained over time. That would be something you would decide every year whether you wanted to do that, but it certainly is a service that we provide. The dates on this, by the end of next week, we would have the pay data, the structures, procedures, your organizational charts, and the job descriptions would be submitted to us. By the end of the month, I was looking at that date, the 27th, I think that's our big convention, so it might not be that day, but it will be completed by the 27th. We will meet with senior administration to plan the project, set the calendar milestones. I like to have deadlines in place so that, you know, we stay on track and that the project stays in place. I like to have deadlines in place so that, you know, we stay on track and that the project stays in place, and we don't get too far off. By the 11th of October, we will begin onsite interviews with department heads. We'll probably have at least three consultants come in and do the, your large, we want to make sure that we get a complete scan and we're able to talk to people, so we'll spend a couple of days here. Then, by November the 22nd, we will have the market analysis complete, and the preliminary findings will be ready to share. One thing I want to mention, and I forgot to mention it earlier in the session, was we are going to go ahead and extract for now, we would extract our 1213 data and age it to the present. So, that way, we can go ahead and get started and build, start building structures. We are in the process right now, in fact, I think this week or next week, our new salary survey for 1314 is just going out. So, our data, the 1314 data won't be ready until probably around Thanksgiving. So, we want to go ahead and get a big start on it. Then, we'll pull more data for, once our newest data is correct, will, is actually able to extract out of our system, then we will check these benchmarks and see if, how close we are. So, we'll, you'll actually get two markets. You'll get one that we're going to start with, and then we'll do the update and look at the 1314 as well. We will have the first draft of recommended pay structure stipends and employee pay adjustments. The first blush will be before the Christmas break. So, there will be cost estimates, and we'll know the impact before Christmas. Then, by the end of January, the final report will be completed. We will do a presentation to the board, and then the written pay procedures will be developed and submitted to the district. So, it's, we're ready to, we're ready to start. We're ready to rock and roll here, so. And if, do you have any questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Patton. We do have some questions.
I'm sure you do.
You knew you wouldn't get on this one. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Patton, welcome.
Thank you.
We were just saying that we think we've seen you before, so probably at a TASB conference.
Probably at maybe the Summer Leadership Institute or the convention. I do a lot of presentations.
Couple of questions. This salary survey is a significant part of our strategic plan, so it's just critical that we get it right, and we know you will do it right. When you talk about, say, the salary of a teacher, is it the generic teacher? Or do you separate out teachers by need or by subject area or anything like that?
Right now, the salary survey data, we survey for just general classroom teachers. We get one cut of data, surveying at every five years of experience up to 20, from zero to five. We get their hiring salaries and compare yours. Then, we're also able to get information, like, do they pay extra stipends for math or science or mentor teachers, master's degrees, certain shortage areas stipends, so. But we don't survey for, like, fourth-grade teachers or seventh-grade, you know, English teachers, something like that.
But you do go into the stipend, the whole stipend business?
Yes.
All right. How about for bigger-money people like coaches, band directors? Does that come out as a separate element in the survey?
We actually conduct, do get salary information for head football coaches, for, I think we put the band, the band directors. We survey for all of the senior administrators, all the principals, assistant principals, all level of counselor, all the diagnosticians. The coaching is, comes out as, is a separate survey that we conduct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Dr. Rush.
Thank you, President Hogg. And the scope of this, as far as employees, are we looking, are you going to be looking literally at every employee category that we have in the district from top to bottom?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't believe this includes substitutes or temporary staff. But for, we will be looking at teachers, administrators, professionals, clerical, paraprofessionals, technology.
Comprehensive, then. Good, good. And with that said, will, when you look especially, you know, at other districts, but also with third parties and private sector world, will you look at any incentive programs or models that they have set up? Will you look at benefit structures that they may have set up that might be too much? I'm more interested in the incentive part, but.
Right now, this does not include doing incentives. We will, and other than just the stipend piece. I, in particularly in the private sector, that data wouldn't be available anyway. But we have information on other school districts and some of their plans and what they do. Whatever I have, I'll be happy to share with you. But this particular plan is limited to a market salary survey and not developing any kind of an incentive plan.
Okay. And I would think that the majority of these consults that you do result in notifying districts, you have to increase here, 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 in a lot of areas. And I expect that we'll have a decent amount of that here in our district. I was just wondering, from your experience as a whole, when you compare a like job in the private sector versus the public education world, I guess in Texas, I'm interested in our market as well. Would you, would it be a statement, an accurate statement that private sector, you get more pay than you do in public? Or you get more pay in public in a government sector?
Well.
Or is that too broad to?
I think that would be depending on the job. There are some jobs that school districts value at a very high level that some of the other public and private sectors do not value quite as highly. Then, there are some jobs that some of the professionals, medical professionals are one, like occupational therapists or physical therapists, where the private sector, hospitals tend to pay a little bit more. One reason, one thing we have to remember in school districts is that not every job works 12 months a year. Where in the private sector, every job works 12 months a year. Well, in the school districts, they may work 10 months or they might work 11 months. So, we have to make allowances for that. It's kind of, it would be overreaching for me to always say, oh, the private sector always pays more than the public sector. I think every business has their own particular positions that they are, that they value more than others because of the nature of the business that they're in. So, we, we use this data, and we try to mix it with our, with our school district data when we have matches as well. Or then, I will bring in, we'll just use the matches from the private sector, making allowances for calendar.
And the final question I would have on, when you compare, whether it's our market or the state of Texas Public Ed districts, are there breakdowns on the, the size of the district? Does that play into salary structure? I would imagine it does.
Yes, it does. And we will be looking at districts that look like you, that are comparable to you, that you, and also that compete, that you really compete for talent with.
Right.
Who are you competing to try to get the best? So, it's, first emphasis, of course, is going to be here in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. There are lots of school districts up here, and there's lots of very good ones up here. So, we want to make sure we capture as much of that as possible. But there are other districts throughout the state that are also quite large. So, we will be able to extract whatever districts you want to see. As long as they participate in our salary survey, we'll be able to extract those districts and take a look at them.
Okay. That's great. And I know we have our, our list of both of those categories that we typically look at. And if there's others that you know that would match, that we don't have on that list, I would ask that you supply that as well.
We will certainly.
Say, hey, maybe you ought to think about this district.
Yeah, we'll certainly make recommendations.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Ms. Solins.
Thank you, President Hogg. Thank you, Ms. Patton, for being here this evening. I think that your answer to Dr. Rush's question probably answers mine as well. But I wondered if the information that you have would be disaggregated by wealth equalization. You know, some districts in Texas are property wealthy, and other districts in Texas are not. And so, we have funding differentials, and I would assume that that would funnel down into what salaries are.
It does, and then other times it doesn't because, you know, there are, districts are competing for talent around them, and so, with the districts around them. And so, we can look at that. I can extract information and find districts that might look just like you on paper. And I've done this for other districts that look just like you on paper. And then, you look at the names and go, I, we don't compete with them. But I can certainly, we can certainly, and some of the wealthiest school districts don't always pay the most. But we can look, like I said, I can get district data from any, from any district as long as they have participated in our survey. I can also look at, using a variety of different factors, look at some districts that might look like you on paper, and we can look and see if you want to include those on the list.
I think you hit it when you say we're competing with the districts closest to us generally, so I understand that. I, I just, you know, at some point, the affordability question has, has to be asked and has to be managed. So, I am interested in what that may be. I'm not sure that it's worth going to that much effort. I'll leave that at worst to you, administration, to decide. That's another thing on disaggregation on performance levels. It's one thing when people are, you know, are the districts performing extremely at high levels with a different pay structure. Do we look at anything on performance versus pay?
We can certainly get that information. I don't know that I've ever really seen a definite correlation between compensation systems and performance level. But it might, but we can certainly get that information and have that for the school districts. But there's, we don't, it's, it would be kind of an interesting fact. I don't know that there's a cause of.
It might be an aside. I mean, my interest, of course, you know, as Mr. Barron said, is this is a key cornerstone of our strategic plan and equity for employees and making sure we're competitive. That's job one. I just have a couple of other questions.
Absolutely. Yeah, we will get the information. It'll, it might be interesting to take a look at.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. One quick question. Does it take into account total compensation? So, stipends that are paid, healthcare, because you then don't have the comparison. You do have to compare private sector, 401Ks versus pensions.
Right. This does not include 401Ks, pensions, stock options, anything that includes in the private sector. We are not going to be able to get that information. We can get healthcare information from school districts. It is not a part of our survey that we get, so it would have to be kind of a calling around and finding out contributions, if they make more contributions to the healthcare, which is the largest. This particular study is pretty much limited to the pay system itself and not all the other things that kind of go into, whether they have EAPs or, you know, all kinds of other benefits that they might provide.
So, what about stipends? Because I would consider that part of pay.
The stipends, we will have for the teachers. We have 2012, 13 data for extracurricular stipends as well. We survey for about 60 different sports and extracurricular activities. So, we will have that information. Our stipend, 1314 stipend information is not going to be ready until the spring, which I know is long after you.
So, like, master stipend?
Master stipend, math, science, mentor, bilingual ESL. We'll have all of that.
Is there any, I know some districts do give kind of first-year incentives for math or science teachers sometimes. Is there any survey, is there any work on that?
We just find out whether they pay a stipend for math or science. Sometimes, we ask for other stipends that they might pay that we don't survey for. And sometimes, that will show up there that we'll do a one-time, or they'll report that there's a signing bonus. But we don't survey separately for first-year teachers. We just survey for the regular math and science stipend.
But all the extracurricular, not just coaches, but like organizers of clubs and things like that that get stipends?
Well, we, we have, we survey for about 64 of the benchmark extracurricular activities. There is no way we could ever survey for every stipend paid in this state. I mean, there's just millions of them. So, but we will, we survey for department heads, for U I L events, orchestra, band, ROTC, cheerleading, all the major sports.
The major ones, the majority of, okay. Perfect. One, one more. Mr. Hibbs.
You mentioned that you, under this review, it will not take into account substitute teachers. Is that, is that correct?
Well, we do collect substitute information. We can have information on that because we actually survey for that. But the cost implications and building a salary structure and all of that.
That's something generally, we, we're competing around just within the other districts in our area, so we could probably collect that ourselves. Is that correct?
Well, we actually do have the survey information for that, so we can take a look at it.
Yes, and, you know, when we work on our budget each spring, we do survey those districts around us that we compete with for subs, and we check their daily rates on subs. And we had a discussion with FFC and then with the board even this year on subpay. Subpay was adjusted by $2 a day as a result of that particular survey work that we did ourselves. But we will certainly welcome having any information that TASB can share with us on that. But we do, that is something that we check.
Yeah, that's something that we're checking already because that's really what we're looking at in the competing districts surrounding us. I just wanted to know that. I actually had two telephone calls this, this week on subpay. So, that's, that's why they said we weren't included in the bonus. But we did increase their salary by $2.
$2, $2 a day for each of the different types of categories, whether they were degreed or not degreed. And so, and even the rate that they're paid after they've been in a position for 10 days. So, all those different categories were increased by $2 a day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, at this time, if someone would like to make a motion, because it is up for discussion action.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion for acceptance by Mr. Pampa and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Ms. Patton, we look forward to your work.
Thank you very much.
Next on gen items, we have items withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items withdrawn from the consent agenda?
President Hogg, I'd like to get, under letter C, 1411 Annual Contract for Instructional Materials, to have that pulled, discussed separately.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Any other items? Perfect. Tonight, we'll be considering items listed on your agenda or consent, consent items excluding the pulled item. Ms. Powell, please share donations and bids with us.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos, it's my privilege this evening to report donations from the following individuals and organizations: Community Foundation of North Texas, Spring Creek Barbecue, Chick-fil-A, Mansfield Islamic Center, Greg Crosby, the Arlington High School Football Booster Club, the Arlington High School School Backstage Booster Club, Legends Hospitality, Golden Chick, Bart Cook, the Lamar High School Football Booster Club, Lamar High School Band Booster Club, the Gunn Junior High School PTA, and Shaka for Junior High School PTA. The total donations presented for your consideration this evening are $112,790, and that brings our year-to-date total to $178,143. With the action to remove one bid for separate consideration, that leaves one bid on the agenda for your consideration. And we do recommend the lowest bids and the bids representing the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and thank the community for their generous donations. We're a little behind from last year. Mr. Prowl, go ahead and raise some more money for our new grant groups. It's early in the year. We won't hit your goal till later, so. Just a little sales humor, Mr. Prowl. That's all it is. At this, see, Mr. Pampa would laugh. I forgot it. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items with the exception of the drawn items?
Motion to accept the consent with the exception of item 14-11, which will be considered separately.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. We have a motion by Mr. Barron and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting in the affirmative. Now, we discuss Item C 1411 withdrawn by Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Hibbs?
President Hogg, the reason I pulled this is I, I am in favor of it, but I, in the purpose of full disclosure, under this, the bid process for the Annual Contract for Instructional Materials, Supply Services, and Consumables, one of the items consists of Camp Thurman. My wife works at Camp Thurman. I have a. I have a disclosure statement on with the, the district. She is not any high-level person, but I, I would, just wanted this to be pulled so I could explain that, because I will abstain from this particular vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. She works at a wonderful camp. So with that, any further discussion, I would accept a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pampa and a second by Dr. Reich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, five voting in affirmative. Mr. Hibbs abstaining. Next, we move on to our discussion items. We'll move to discussion item. What's my agenda? School boundary process. A, school boundary process. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and at this time, we'd like to have a brief presentation about our boundary process as we are in the process of, of constructing 10 classrooms at three sites that would be Blanton, Knox, and Rankin. And so these elementaries will have more capacity, and so we would have to redraw boundaries as a result of that. And so Mr. Hill is here to present the process that we'll use to redraw some of those boundaries. Mr. Hill.
Great, thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Boundary change process, here we go.
It's always fun, Mr. Hill, boundary process.
Looking forward to it.
It's elementary, not high school, so I think we're a little better, but.
Let's, let's stay there. What we kind of want to accomplish tonight is just inform you about the process and the timelines for the proposed boundary changes at seven East Arlington Elementary campuses as a result of the classroom additions at the three campuses. So that's kind of what we want to accomplish tonight. I want to look at current enrollment versus current capacity. What you'll see in the extreme left column here is the capacity at each of these seven campuses. And again, this is snapshot data from October, which is a snapshot data, date in 2012. That next column gives you the actual enrollment at those campuses on that date. The building load column, that's basically at any given point, if every student were present in those campuses, how many kids would be there. And so you'll see the enrollment, for instance, at Berry at 819, but the building load is only 744. And that would take into account pre-K, where there's only half-day pre-K, and so at any, we take the enrollment of pre-K and we divide that in half, and you add that on to the, to the enrollment, I'm sorry, you subtract that from the enrollment, and that will give you the load, or how many kids would be in that building at one time. And then you have the number over/under capacity for each one of the campuses. So the capacity for those entire seven campuses is 4,555 students. The enrollment is 5,300 roughly. The load is 4,200, and we're about 437 kids above at that snapshot date in October, which is about 10% over capacity. We talked about the expansion, and so what we're doing to address that, we've got, again, 10 classrooms at each one of these campuses for a total of, total capacity increase of 600 students at, 200 at Blanton, 200 at Knox, and 200 at Rankin Elementary. We're going to work with the boundary committee, who will be comprised of the principal of each one of these impacted schools. The principal will select four community members or citizens per school to serve on this committee. There'll be central administration representatives, as well as a representative from Templeton Demographics, who we contract out to do boundaries for, for the district on a regular basis. So they will be there as a resource to us and provide some, some maps for the committee to discuss. Timeline is, again, today is initial presentation. Tomorrow, we will identify, or inform these principals and let them begin to identify those within their community to serve on these committees. A week from today, we will meet and we will look at committee parameters for establishing the boundaries, as well as some draft boundaries that will come from Templeton Demographics. October 3, we'll come back to the board with a presentation to seek approval to hold open forums regarding, on those, or on that or those, our proposed boundaries at that time. October 4, we'll send letters home to, to the parents detailing the preliminary maps and the open forum dates, times, and locations for discussion. October 7 through the 18, we'll hold open forums at select campuses to get community input about, on the boundary changes. Then October 24, we'll come back to the board, I'm sorry, we will meet as a committee to finalize our plan as a committee, and then we'll come back on November 7 to make a presentation to you as a discussion action for, for those boundary changes. If it's approved at night, then we'll send out letters the very next day to the parents. If not, then we'll, we'll take the next steps. What we want to consider are boundary parameters, and so these are the nine guiding principles that we want to, to take into every meeting, and that is first and foremost, student safety, the educational needs. We'll consider natural boundaries, major streets, we don't want kids crossing over major streets again. Transportation cost and the distances as we draw those boundaries, our proposed boundaries. Future growth and school size, ethnicity-population balance, neighborhood identification, feeder patterns, keeping the elementary, junior high, and high school as natural as we can, and then to keeping all change to a minimum. But we know with the capacity increasing at three campuses, and we're over capacity in several, there's going to have to be some change, so. The transfer policy, we want to consider, students who will be in the sixth grade during the 14, 15 school year will have the option to stay at their school. If they have siblings in that, in that school also, we want them to have the same option to stay. Transfer students who are enrolled at these schools at the end of the 13, 14 year will have the option to stay. This rule will also apply for their siblings. These schools will be closed to transfers during the 14, 15 year to, to kind of give us that opportunity to balance and see exactly where we are. And entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. You're certainly getting an education, aren't you?
Yes.
Can we go back to the first slide that said current enrollment versus capacity?
Yes.
All of these numbers, do they include temporaries, or is this just pure building structure?
These are actually students. But yes, yes, I don't. Cindy's coming to help me. This is where, this is where I'm giving the.
I think my question is, is will we be able to remove temporaries through this process? If, if there are temporaries there?
Go ahead.
Oh, the, the initial question, the capacity number is the brick and mortar building itself, and so, yes, that would be the objective, is to remove as many temporary buildings as possible.
That has always been one of our goals.
Yes, and it is ours too.
Okay. Oh, don't run too far away there, Ms. Powell. To put it in perspective, if we add 10 classrooms to a building, this is added to a building that has how many classrooms to start with? Just generally speaking.
That would vary by campus.
I'm, I'm trying to visualize how big an impact it makes adding 10 classrooms.
We, we look at roughly 20 students per classroom.
So 200 kids.
So 200 kids, yes.
All right, to continue then, are we adding restrooms too? Or labs, or just class, just kid classrooms?
Thinking we're.
Because, I mean, adding classrooms impacts everything.
This will take into account core facilities. I think the primary thing that is being added here are, is expanded cafeteria and kitchen at two of the three schools, but those, the restrooms will be considered by the architects based on the standards for the appropriate number of kids, so that will be taken into consideration.
That's all being considered.
Yeah.
And in one case, I think we're expanding the library?
Yes.
And?
Rankin, the library is undersized now, and so we're making an adjustment because we know that if you add additional 200 kids, it certainly will be too small, so.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Hogg. These expansions are due to be online beginning next fall, then, 14, 15?
The expansions of the new.
Yeah, the additions.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And as far as the, the process that you outlined, the change parameters, boundary change parameters, with the exception of the feeder pattern, is that pretty much the, the same as what we did with Adams, or what we've done previously?
That is consistent.
Is consistent?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, and I, I would say, from a trustee perspective, I, this is more schools, a little bit more potential for input and difficulty. I, I didn't hear anything negative from the, the Adams and that boundary, so hopefully keep your fingers crossed, Mr. Hill, this will be the exact same thing.
They've been crossed since.
Thank you.
Almost stuck like this.
Mr. Pampa?
And I was going to go towards that, the transfer policy, because I, we went kind of quick, quickly through it, and this is where we generally get hung up and we get some feedback, so just to be clear, so transfer students who are already transferred into these, these schools, so they don't, they don't, they don't live within the attendance boundaries, so they already transfer in, even during the 2014, 2015 year, when you say you're close to transfer, that doesn't apply to them, right?
That's correct.
Those transfer students are already included. If you're already a transfer, you can stay there if you choose to stay there.
That's correct.
Or they may go back to, or they can transfer somewhere else, right?
That's, to any school that's open for transfers at that time.
Correct.
If you're already in, you're kind of grandfathered.
Yeah, and, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we're clear, because we said that, then we said, close to new transfers. I knew what you meant. I wanted to be, I just wanted to make it clear for our parents that they, they don't freak out that now they can't transfer their students, so I think that was, that was the biggest thing that I just wanted to point out, that if you're already transferred in, you get to stay there if you want to.
That's correct.
Stay there. Okay, thanks.
It's close to new transfers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Dr. Kavassos?
I, I just want to make a, a comment here. In, in some feedback we've received, these boundaries, because there are a number of schools there, it's our expectation that we wouldn't change these boundaries again with a new addition of an elementary. So the, the East Arlington overcrowding relief is very targeted and specific so that we, we're not changing the boundaries over and over. So the new elementary will then affect another school or group of schools, but not these.
Dr. Reich.
I, I just wanted to add a, a question on to this, this transfer situation. The, the boundary lines will be drawn soon enough then for you to take into account come transfer time in March, for those possible cases where they are transferred in, but there actually no need to be transferred to whatever school if they happen to be on this list. Will you be able to have that pretty seamless for that, that March transfer application process district-wide then?
Again, if you'll, we want to have this to you for approval in November.
Right.
And so if we get that, if we meet this timeline, then we, we think that we will be.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if it applies to anybody. I'm thinking it surely applies to a few that are transferred into X school, and now they're going to be already in that attendance zone where they're not going to have to do the transfer paperwork anymore.
Right.
And so that'll open up another couple of spots at that school. I just want to make sure that we have that all balanced and manageable.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Hill, thank you. It's, we did a good job with Adams, and I know these can be, sometimes boundaries can be tough. It is the fall, so it's football season, so I would go to the football team and borrow a helmet if you need it. Just, just to be safe, because, because sometimes boundaries cannot work out so well. So, but I have all the faith in you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Next up, we have open forum for non-agenda items. I don't have any cards tonight, so we will move on to our next item, superintendent's report. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to share some information about our district. And recently, we partnered with several groups and organizations that I believe should have some recognition for back-to-school events that provided supplies for hundreds and hundreds of our students. I want to thank the Junior League of Arlington, the NAACP, and Councilman Robert Rivera, Field Road Baptist Church, Dr. Mitchell, and others for organizing these events. And so I want to publicly thank them and, and look forward to many more partnership opportunities for school supply drives. In addition, the YMCA of Arlington donated hundreds of backpacks, and Kroger donated, and we talked about Kroger and their drive that they initiated, but they donated more than $77,000 worth of supplies to our students this, this, this summer. These donations make a tremendous impact on the education of all our students. On August 24, we had a special ceremony, as you well know, for Adams Elementary, and it was a very, very special event for everyone who attended, and certainly to honor James and Barbara Adams. And they were there the first day of school, and I'm thinking they're still there.
Free employees, Dr. Kavassos, free employees.
Absolutely. The first day of school, I was joined by UT president, UT Arlington President Dr. Vistap Kabari, and Dr. Bill Capola from TCC Southeast for the second annual tweet-along, and I visited a, a number of campuses and ended the day at a fire training center. Didn't walk home, but I, and, and did a day at a fire training center. It was a good culmination to the day, and I'll tell you that the two presidents had a, had a very interesting experience. They, they really enjoyed it, and they had a number of questions from our students that were very insightful, and some put them on the spot, and then some left them speechless. So that was, that was all very good. Martin High School senior Allison Chin had a piece of art selected, and that's, that's the one, to tour in the 2013, 2014 AP Studio Art Student Exhibit. From the 46,200 portfolios that were submitted this year, 30 pieces of art were selected to tour the country in this exhibit. Outstanding accomplishment.
Wow.
And I'll go back once, Ben, sorry about that. The Trinity River Authority recently donated $5,000 to our water communication program, which prepares students to enter the workforce in the water treatment industry in our partnership with the city of, of Arlington. And so they recognized the students and donated $5,000 to that effort, so we appreciate the Trinity River Authority for that donation and that grant. Finally, Beverly Davis has been a driver in the Transportation Department for over 30 years, and she was recently presented an award for being accident-free for 30 years in our Transportation Department. Great job, Beverly.
What? Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive.
That concludes my report, President Hogg.
30 years? She needs to teach drivers that, is what we need to have her, have her be doing. She may never want to get in a car again if she's doing that. She'd probably have a lot of accidents then. We'd ruin her streak if she was doing that. Next, we'll move on to school board's report. Mr. Hibbs?
President Hogg, I just wanted to do a quick plug for Tailgate Arlington. This is put on by the Education Foundation. It's going to be Saturday, September, is September 21st, from 6:00 to 10:00 at the Howe Family Farm. The Education Foundation does great things in our schools, being able to provide grants, and I would encourage anybody that would like to go out and just have a great night of celebration for education to go online, buy their tickets through the Education Foundation, and once again, that's on Saturday, September 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Hogg. I also attended a lot of the back-to-school fairs, well, the, the two big ones, and wanted to add to what Dr. Kavassos said. One of the things that I noticed at, at both, at Sam Houston, as well as at the Junior League Building, was how many additional community organizations were there in support of the school district. Several, and I'm, I'm sorry that I cannot name them all, but we had people offering free, free haircuts, eye screening, all kinds of different. So I was really excited to see the amount of support that we get from the entire community in these events, and it just reassures, reassures my belief that we have a, just a tremendous community here in Arlington, a lot of support. Everybody wants to help us in achieving our, our goals that we've set out, so thank you to all those community supporters, community organizations that have stepped up and, and delivered the assistance that we need to become a premier school district. I do, I do really appreciate it.
Exactly, Mr. Pampa. It's a little thing we like to call momentum. We got it going, let's keep it rolling, so good job, staff and everyone for this. What? That's, that's what I'm about, Dr. Reich. I just come up, taglines up here. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider tonight?
None noted.
[laughing]. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I was about to say, miss, nevermind, we'll move on. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we do not have the last item on our agenda, Agreements Hearing, with that, we will go into closed session at 8:59 PM, we will convene closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, Texas Government Code, and Open Mings Act for the following purposes, evaluations. Thank you, and have a good evening.